This is the January 16th meeting of the Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals. The Grand is elected to the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which we serve, and to the nation under God, and to the justice for all.
Okay. Can you cancel the Pine document?
He's here for that.
Okay, well, let's move into executive session. First, I'd like to make an announcement that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. There isn't anybody here tonight that would want to be listening to any decisions on. But I wanted to be made known that if there were people here that they are opposed to anything or they notified the secretary that they want to be notified of any decisions that are made during the meeting, they have the right to notify her. And there's a 20-day appeal period on any decision. We won't be doing decisions tonight, but I want that as part of the agenda. Okay, we want to review, discuss an act on the Pine document. That's this housing document. Was Bishop supposed to be here or somebody? I saw something on email that he wasn't going to be here.
No, I believe this is just our discussion.
Do we have any discussions?
Should I start?
Go ahead.
So... The Pine's 40B development has completed construction of all the houses. And because it's a 40B development, the final stage is to apply and obtain approval of cost certification with Mass Housing, which is a subsidizing agency. The developer did submit the cost certification analysis to Mass Housing. It looks like they sent it in November. And for whatever reason, it wasn't forwarded to the town at that time, despite some of the conditions in the decision that had required that to happen. However, Mass Housing reviewed it and they put together a draft response, which is, as a draft, likely going to be approving it and with some edits that is not going to have any type of financial impact that we probably have. And they sent it to the town for a comment period before they finalized their response. So I was made aware of that. I suggested that even though this is being sent to this board of selection, and I understand there's a representative from the board of selection here, that it might be helpful to have some from the selection and have some comments from the zoning board, since you were all involved in the permitting of this comprehensive permit. What I can share with you is that essentially, from the town's perspective, if the cost examination indicates a profit of more than 20% by the developer on the development, then that profit would come back to the town to be used for affordable housing purposes. The cost examination that is being proposed by Mass Housing, the developer proposed a profit of 7.78%, but the Mass Housing edits to that propose a profit of 9.55%. So even though they have made some changes, those changes are still not going to put the developer at a higher threshold than 20% profit. That being said, I thought it was important for the town to take an opportunity to look at this, to have the board to look at this. I have reviewed it myself. I have a couple things that I note that might be helpful for this election to maybe make note of as well. The first has to do with some documentation. I know that I was provided with some supplemental information of what the developer may have sent to Mass Housing. But the Mass Housing letter, as I looked at it, actually refers to something that Mass Housing received from the developer that was dated September 27, 2018. And what I was shown was dated August 24, 2018. So I'm wondering if there's more information from the developer that maybe is in Mass Housing's hands. They were supposed to have attached this to their letter, and it appears they may not have. So it may be worthwhile before the comment period, if I was to explore it out via Mass Housing and make sure we got everything that Mass Housing received. And you may want to also mention to them that it was a condition of the comprehensive permit that this should have been sent to the town simultaneous with the final end of Mass Housing. It was not done, so that's why we want to make sure that we do have everything that was sent out there.
Could someone notify Bishop?
Someone can check in with Bishop, but I would also check in with Mass Housing. And again, I guess we can talk about whether that should be something done through a different town department, if we want to have it be the selectman for that who the letter was sent to. I mean, however you guys all feel would be appropriate, or have the zoning board follow up. I don't think that there's anybody... Jim, you have a relationship with Bishop.
I do.
But it's not just for Bishop to give this to us, it's for us to know what was sent to Mass Housing.
Yeah. My suggestion, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is this is not for us 40B coming over close. I suggest we do it the right way. If the interaction between Mass Housing with the town is through the selectmen, then I think the conduit needs to be through the selectmen. Certainly, we're all here for support, but I think it would be imperative that everyone go to selectmen, if that's just my humble thing to do.
Yeah, we have the bag of...
Yeah, so I would just reach out to Gregory Watson then, or it says Ms. Weir, Jennifer Weir, in the letter, with her phone number, and just check in with her and say, if I found something that was dated September 27, if we don't have it, could you send that to us? And then if you get something else, I'd be happy to take a look at it. I can even provide some guidance for the other selection or to Jim individually, whatever I see with that. You'll still get the board's comments. I doubt it's going to be significantly different than what we have, but still, we're proud to see. On the positive side, here's what I'm going to say that I was really most interested in. One of the unique conditions about this development, Ken, you may remember this, is that, if you recall way back when we permitted this, there was this discrepancy over the appraisal and how much they should be listing as the appraised value of the land at the time of cost certification, which seems so far away at that time. They have honored that in this cost examination report. So not only did they provide the appraisal to Mass Housing, which is very clear here, but they also honored the value that was listed in that appraisal. They had permission in the condition to be a little more expansive with that and to try to indicate the land value's acquisition cost was even greater, but they did not... Well, Mass Housing has not even gone that route. So they are honoring that appraisal way back from Avery Associates. So that was a positive thing to see, because that was a big piece that I thought would be a unique element to this.
Because he actually purchased that one, too. He took a thousand dollars, got it in connection, and he said it was worth $2 million.
Right. But instead, it was valued, according to Mass Housing's calculations, at the amount of $860,000 plus Mass Housing gave additional sums, $12,000 for some extra land costs. I think it was interest on some of the moments that they took out because where the $12,000 came from. So right now, Mass Housing is only recognizing a total of $872,000 for the land acquisition value. And if you kind of look at the way that this analysis is done, you know, it's based on... That would be considered a cost of the project. So anytime the costs start to increase, then that's going to detract from the total percentage. It's going to lower the percentage based on the project that's there. So if the cost of the site acquisition is lowered, which is what Mass Housing did, then that's going to cause the profit to increase. And that's one of the reasons that they went from 7.78% to 9.55%. The other change that Mass Housing made, just to try to explain what I'm seeing here in Mass Housing's analysis, is that they also reduced the soft costs by about $17,000. And I believe that had to do with some of the related party pieces that were identified. So in this case, the developer had a related party, the builder. So essentially, the developer is PMJD Realty LLC. One of the members of the LLC is also a member of Stone Ridge Homes, Inc. And so there's certain rules that exist in the cost certification process, where you have to first identify and be clear that there is a related party in the transaction. And then you have to attribute certain costs, but you're limiting a lot of those costs for me to that related party. So just trying to confirm, I believe they reduced that by... Those related party transactions by about $17,000. So that being said, one of the things that Mass Housing did note is that even if the site acquisition costs were zero, we still wouldn't be at a 20% profit margin. And you know, I looked at it quickly. If we somehow had a zero in the site acquisition cost, then the profit, the total cost, would have been about $1.9 million. And in order to get to 20% profit margin, we would have to show the cost of around $2.3 million. So they are correct with that. However, I did have some questions that I myself had that I thought I'd share with the board, and then maybe as the board reviewed this, they may have some questions. One of the things I asked the building inspector to provide to us was some information on what work was down in the development prior to the PMJD Realty LLC taking over, because it appears to me, based on the information presented by the developer, that they are somehow implying that there weren't any costs... Essentially, they said that their analysis was only for the period covering December 12 to 2015 to August 24 to 2018. And correctly, if I'm wrong, I thought by the time they bought that subdivision, at least the base coat of the road had been laid, and several... A lot of the utility would have been done.
The base coat had been laid. I don't know if the utility work was done, but the road was definitely done. I don't know about the rest, but I do know the road was done.
So they aren't listing any costs for onsite septic or onsite water. I know it's individual septic systems and it's town water, but they're also not listing any costs for rough grading of site prep. I think that they're...
This would be prior to what year?
Prior to 2013. They obtained the permit and they purchased the property beginning in 2014. They got the amended permit in September of 2014. So you know, the developer's not listing any costs for that. And I don't know if we want to make a note to Mass Housing that there were... This property, there were costs in site prep work that had already been done on the property prior to the PMJD Realty LLC purchasing it, in that you question why there isn't any cost listed for rough grading in site prep. That would be one suggestion I would make.
Marguerite, that particular project, the person that went in and did the first level project in the bank ended up taking it over. So their sale price was a new buyer. He bought that in effect as it was developed to that point.
I realize that, but again, you know, this is about the development as a whole and not necessarily the front buyer. This is about how the development as a whole...
Yeah, this is the permit follows through. So what I can tell you is that there were no building permits issued to that project prior to 2015.
Okay.
So anything that was done to that particular subdivision prior to that date, and that's January 2015, was the first permit, would only be infrastructural improvements. That would be IE utilities, storm drainage, roadway layouts, et cetera, et cetera. I can tell you factually that no site work was done on any of the buildable lots until the first permit was issued. Now, that doesn't mean that some of the storm drainage infrastructure wasn't in place, because I believe it was, prior to that date. So that would certainly be credence to some of your points of concern.
Well, and there was clearly some site prep. I would say some site prep work, and I think with the roadway, and I would assume there was a positive cooperation, but... The other piece that I would recommend, maybe...
Let's stay with that. What Popik said, though, I mean, if they had privilege, that's what it cost them.
Yeah, no matter what work was done beforehand, this is what it's costing.
It isn't the petition on this permit.
Right. So, and I'm not privy to what you're looking at at the moment. What value was put on the property when PJME signed, bought it? Is that quantified anywhere?
No, actually, they put on the appraised value from Avery, which was prior to PMJD Realty.
Which is $800 and something thousand?
$60,000. So they did not list what they heard paid. So again, as much as I realize that this is... And this may be something you can clarify with Mass Housing. You know, because they recognized that this was a second buyer.
Right.
But there were expenses and costs put into the property prior to their purchase. They didn't buy it undeveloped.
Right.
And...
That seems like...
You know, and there was permitting costs, of course, that aren't identified either. So, I mean, they listed their legal expenses, but maybe there was additional... I know there was legal expenses associated with permitting this with this zoning board.
Right.
So maybe just something to inquire with Mass Housing and to find out about, you know, should they have included or should there be reflected costs that were put into the property prior to their purchasing? And they are very open about the fact that they're only listing the costs from that 2013 timeframe forward.
And Marguerite, it shows you that there's only a 9.5% profit. Isn't that really low compared to other 40Bs? I thought they were supposed to come in somewhere around, you know, 12 to 14.
I think that, given the timeframe that this was developed and then sold during, that it's not necessarily that low.
But how does the whole cost of the length this happened when the man only purchased it in 2014, 15? How does that... You know, the price that was set there was all added into the cost when he purchased it, because like you said, it's not undeveloped.
Right.
It was developed probably three years ago.
Right, so this 9.22% profit is what's shown using the analysis that is required under the regulations of Mass Housing. Does that represent the in-pocket money that he received? Probably not, especially because we know there's related party transactions going on. That was a business decision that he made. But they need to present this report following the guidelines and requirements that exist with the state for showing the accounting of the project. Again, the project, not just their expenses on the sale. You know, they do reflect the appraised value, the site acquisition cost, pre their purchase. But I'm wondering if they should reflect any other costs that went into it. The other thing I would also suggest that the selection confirm, they've identified the value, the sales value, for the affordable units and market units. Now, I believe your town assessors can confirm that that number is accurate. Initially, and this is why I was wondering what year you got building permits for that issued. If you recall, initially, the permit had a limit, a cap limit, on what every portable home could sell at. However, when the developer, the current PMJD came in, they, as part of their amended permit, when they went to for sale homes and reduced the number, they also got the analysis to reflect kind of that 2% language of what average median income is for, you know, homeowners in the area. So they had a rolling number that they could use. I'd be interested to see, and I think it'd be worthwhile for the selection to look at particularly the affordable units, make sure that they're not all being shown as being sold at a very high number, because they were sold over a period of several years. Kind of compare that to the dates on which they were sold.
So I had three each year to make a list. 2015, 2016, 2017.
And see if there's a change in value that's listed for that. It's hard to tell because we just have the total sale price, you know, of all nine of them. The market rate units is more of just a... I would suggest that you look at that just to double check. Again, if this increases somehow or changes, that could impact the profit margin. So that's why I would say look at those pieces. 2015, 16, 17, you said, Jim, were the years of the...
Yeah, we had three affordables built in each year as follows. Three in 2015, three in 2016, and then three in 2017.
And who are we seeking information from, from Mass Housing Hall? You're asking that in the session?
Well, so what I would do is I would ask the assessor's office to give you that data. You can find out from Jim, you know, which, what number of homes and all that information. You can just look at that. They identified the affordable unit average sale price of $196,785. And that may be the actual sale price for all of them, or it may be truly an average. I don't know. But I would check, and if you find that it's inaccurate or you're questioning it, I would present that to Mass Housing in your letter of response. And if it looks like there's... You really, as you get to that final point, and again, if you want to reach out to me, I'm happy to talk to you further about it, you know, just sort of through a phone call or emails. But if it looks like you're at a point where you really have some serious questions and you're concerned, and we kind of run some numbers ourselves and think this could have an impact that gets us closer towards that 20% number, the other thing I would suggest you think about doing is asking for additional time before this becomes final, becomes final, so that you can get that information and that answer back from Mass Housing or from the developer. Again, what you're looking at, trying to ultimately determine is, is there a rate of a 20% profit margin here? And if there is, that's money the town is entitled to.
So I know the zoning board has set a definitive date of March or...
So the bond is about...
The bond on the road.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily about cost certification. That's about when they've completed constructions of project. And as I understand it...
It's still in hold.
The last... It's a year after the last house was sold, and they didn't have any other infrastructure work to do, right?
Zero.
So they were done by the time that last house was sold. So that would be the last... That would be the date. It runs one year from that, regardless of whether this is still...
Tom is already accepting it.
Right, but that doesn't close out the comprehensive permit, if I'm not following...
No, the comprehensive permit would ultimately be closed out when this gets finalized.
What, are you talking about the bond on the road or...
No, I think there's another after this board has closed out the comprehensive permit. Am I following correctly?
No, I think the only thing was there was a draft letter that I saw that was being proposed to go to the planning board to identify the date to release the bond.
Okay.
That would be a separate action on this issue of cost certification. Oh, the town...
Oh, my eagle.
It might be, I'm sorry.
I didn't include the letter in anyone's packets. It was a draft letter, and I've been holding off on reading that. And even though this both came, it's because I don't know how this discussion works that. If the board says okay, we'll hold on that. I consider that to be acceptable.
Yeah, you're right. She's the one with me, but... That's, to me, suffer from cost certification. Now, with that being said, I also thought it was worthwhile for the board to kind of review this information and let me know if it had any questions. Partic... You know, essentially, this isn't going to be the last opportunity for the town and the board to really ask any questions about this particular development. But also, it's the first time going through this process, so I think those are all...
Right, exactly.
Reasons to come together and talk about this.
Right.
And Ken, I thought it was great that you were the appointed person, since you were the one on the board at the time, was the point.
Exactly, at the time.
Yeah. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board has. Those are the pieces that I noted in my review.
The only question I had originally about the amount was it seemed to be very low. Especially where it gives you half to add in all of the other things that were mentioned.
Right, I guess, if you recall, for a series of years where the housing market was pretty poor, we were seeing estimates, because at the time, you know, Dayton Woods in particular was coming in with their performance guarantee requests with different statements as to what it would look like if they were to end now. And they were at like a 4% or 5% profit margin. It was really low. So it is going creeping back up.
I do remember Ed Marchant said in different meetings that we had had that if we... It has to be below 20% if it goes over that, we get the extra money. But he said if we condition it to the point where it gets down below 12, it gives them a strong fight in Boston with Mass Housing. And that's why when I saw this 9.5, that, you know, I was like, why is this so low?
Right, except that I think that that advice was given at a time...
A different time, you're right.
When the housing market was really strong. And, you know, then I don't think it was really feasible for anyone to even be making 12 at that for a while. This, I mean, I appreciated that Mass Housing did make their adjustments, and they have it up more at about 9... You know, the 9.55. I suspect that maybe if we really spent a lot of time, that might go a little bit higher, but I don't see it getting to 20%, to be perfectly honest. But I do think, since it's the first time the town has done this, it's good to have just some structures in place of what you want to look at and check into.
Maybe there's a second one coming up, too.
Right. The amount will be a little different because he provided that.
So if I'm understanding, for example, for the nine affordable units, if they're showing the aggregate of roughly $196,000, and it were $192,000, if we went back and took a second look, that would slightly increase the profit level, but the margin's still going to be well within 20%.
I suspect so. I mean, the only way that I, you know, as I was running different scenarios in my head and looking at this, if the profit margin changed and then the land acquisition is zero, it might start having some impact. But you can't have a land acquisition of zero, and they have shown it to be consistent with what the board is originally seeking at the time of permitting of it, so...
I guess, I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, if we're talking, you know, if we're looking at an idea, even if we said, if you took an arbitrary figure of $10,000 times a height of $90,000, and took it down to 186 or 187, that aggregate isn't going to have enough of a significant change. So it's really important for us to have a better view.
I think it establishes a process.
Yeah.
The protocol, it sets the protocol.
Well, yeah, I agree.
That's what we're trying to do.
That's what we're trying to do, because we may have other projects down the line. So my professional opinion is setting a protocol and making the dialogue, opening up the dialogue with Mass Housing, tells them that we'll watch all this stuff.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, I agree, I just want to...
And what I'll say is that had the units been sold prior to 2014, when the permit was amended, the restriction on the sale of the affordable units at that time was $160,000 up to $162,000. So it was definitely much lower than what they're showing as the average on. So, you know, again, it looks like they didn't sell any units.
Did you Google that?
Are you... Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, I can Google it myself.
Okay.
Just pleased with us.
Okay.
I'll look at it as soon as I meet next week.
If you do receive anything further from Mass Housing on that September 27 filing, please feel free to send it out.
I'll send it, I'll call them.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, PMJD Realty, that's the zoning board.
So that was covered just now, but in the...
All that, I mean...
I did not get to Gaye D's letter or the draft letter for corn and spawn. So just, I think the essence of attorney Gabe's letter was simply to provide the board with the documentation that will be needed for its file to confirm that now the acceptance of Sylvia Way is complete. So there was a deed, a copy recorded deed, and that deed was from PMJD Realty LLC to the town of Dayton to provide the actual lender of Sylvia Way to the town. And then the town clerk certification of vote, which would have been a vote in that town meeting to accept Sylvia Way. And also, a certificate of legal assistance of PMJD Realty LLC, which shows that as a number eight, 2019, they are still active and fully, they file all certificates to remain viable and remaining viable as a company to the district law of Massachusetts. So that information, I think it's just being provided to the town essentially for its purposes.
I have a question. Was there any technical plan recorded that's associated with that? Or is it just referencing the...
It sounded D, but...
There's setbacks and curbs and everything else.
So it's...
But there's no plan? That just shows a self-plan.
No, there was a plan recorded. It was dated all... Uh, no, there was a plan recorded. I just dated August 13, 2018, prepared by Outback Engineering. It looks like it was recorded in Plan Book 517, page 39. And I don't think that copy was provided to the town, but certainly is referenced in the deed.
I would just make recommendations to Chandler that you change a copy of that plan if you don't already have it, complete it with the file, the files file.
What are you looking for, Jim?
The actual plan that was recorded.
Number and everything in the file.
Somebody want to move to that? Use number.
Simply because we have that exposure downstairs.
What did you call it? Do I need somebody to make a call?
Yeah, so it's, if you turn to the deed, it's referencing this sort of, this paragraph of sort of a pending outside perimeter of Sylvia Way.
Right, so you want, someone needs to make a motion. Make a motion that would request the site plan for the road, Plan Book Number Page 517, page 39.
I'll second the motion.
On favor.
All right. Thank you.
All right, the bond's bond, a letter from Mary Hathaway.
For, I concluded in the packet a draft bond release letter after our last discussion with Fisher of the Seaguard. Again, I haven't moved forward because I knew this discussion was coming up, and if there was anything that we still needed, I would hold off on that anymore. But if the board sees that letter as okay, I would move forward on submitting that.
Will you accept this?
Yes, if the board could accept that and allow me to submit that to community, that would be great. The only reason I'm asking for this vote is because.
Do you need a vote or just send it?
Either way, the board, I mean, if you do it that way, then you at least make it clear that you know you're releasing the performance bond.
Sorry.
By making a vote, it's clear in the record that you have voted to release the performance bond.
All right, somebody want to make a motion to accept the letter and send it to Mary Hathaway?
I'll make a motion that you send a letter regarding the files performed bond to our downtown treasurer, Mary Hathaway.
I'll second.
On favor. Any second. On favor.
All right.
We're going to make a change. We're going to go into executive session. You too.
Me too?
You too. You know, if you must. With the call, I mean, my, my, he's, I don't know.
Yeah, I think the Billy Inspector can sit in on executive session, which probably, I'm not going to endorse him, Ken. Through another board, you are usually sitting as an advisor to the board.
Thank you. I'll leave the room.
Gabriel needs to leave the room. Sorry, Gabriel.
He has to read it, and then you shut it off.
Yeah, thank you. Good to see you.
And you can just say that we will not be going back into the session?
Yes, we will.
Or we will?
We will.
Thank you for downstairs.
Yeah, you guys.
You guys move upstairs.
He can show the calls over. So I read this first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jimmy, we've, well, good morning, Andy.
Ready? I can show the calls over. I move to enter executive session pursuant to purpose number three of the open meeting law to discuss the penny litigation in the matter of Seer, the Chico et al., docket number 1073CB00592, and strategy related thereto as an open meeting will have detrimental effect on the litigation position in the town, and the town and the board, and we will have to vote to return to open session. I need a second.
Sure.
And we need a roll call vote on this as well, so myself, I vote yea.
Oh, yea. Yea.
Yea.
Yea.
All right, gentlemen.
Beginning of the January 16th meeting, Detective John Wilson coming back out of executive sessions. During the executive session, we discussed legal matters. Attorney Michael Mitchell brought us up today. Martin, do I name, what we just, petitioner, whatever.
Yeah, it was on the agenda for Dr. Seer versus.
Yeah, Dr. Seer versus Chico. Did it say, seven of them?
And no votes were taken.
No votes were taken. Okay, well, we're going to go into old business here, but I'm going to take over because I have some of my own agenda here to deal with. And I'm going to get that out of the way. And first of it is, I discussed, I talked with you guys about changing the board, the administration of the board, and I talked with this, I talked with the board chair, and they said any adjustment to the board. And I understood what I wanted their opinion of, would have to come with four full-time members. I spoke to Greg about taking over chairship, and he didn't feel as though he wanted to. And even at the time, I spoke to Zach, who was a full-time member, and he is interested in taking over as chairman. Therefore, as of now, I'm going to submit this as a letter. And we're here, and we're going to put it to the minister. Based on the problems, oh, it says, to whom it may concern zoning board of appeals. Based on the problems discussed with members of the board selected our administrator without resolve, I no longer feel safe working in this position. Therefore, I resign as chairman of the zoning board of appeals effective 1/16/2919. And after that, I'll turn this over to Greg Miller, acting chairman, or he does vice chairman. Yeah, turn the meeting over to you. Thank you all very much. Now, thank you. All right. So I give the letter. Yeah, I need the letter to the right above. And that good.
Yep, thank you.
So. Okay, old business, that's where we're at right now, when we discuss Act 20, the Appeal Period Verification Template.
Mr. Vice Chairman, can I say something?
Sure.
I just want to acknowledge the service that you've given to the town for so many years. You're pivotal and well-versed.
What comes to point, Chris, Jimmy just, I know.
You don't have to explain it. That's why I thank you for your service, okay?
I'll be in touch. I'm available to anybody that needs.
Okay.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes.
There's the, the issue of the budget, which is still on the news, I don't know anymore.
Right, I just had a question too. At what point in the meeting do we go about nominating new chairman?
That's up to the vice chairman.
Okay, I'd like to do that right now.
I can tell you were taking over.
Yeah, I already did. I put a curve ball there.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm sorry, we can't vote on it here because it's not put into the agenda. We can have it active, but we can put that on the agenda for.
Perfect.
Okay. So then if you discuss the Act of Physically A 2020 Budget, is that where I'm at now?
Right. Excuse me, one second. I appreciate the comments, but reorganizing the board has to be agendaing when you lose a number?
Well, this is why, this is why I was just going to bring something up about that. I don't really see why this should happen. I can do that.
I believe anything that's voted on is going to be part of the agenda. I might be wrong on that.
Well, I think that, I think that, I believe our reservation and appointment at the same meeting.
Right. Your reservation wasn't part of the agenda, was it?
No.
No, right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I know he's gone down, we've spoken this afternoon, he's talked to all members of the board. He's obviously going to do all this, and I cannot take on that acting, how chairman positions through the work. We're going to have more and more work, and we discussed, and we thought it was going to be in the hands of Zach running it. He's the next in the line. I know when Mr. Carr left in Camp Chico, took on, we did it that way, and then that meeting.
It was on the agenda though. I remember seeing the agenda, you know, reconstruction of board. That was also on the agenda when Ken, my first, becomes elected. So I guess my question would be, what, if anything, are we violating not having it on the agenda?
Well, it's putting on the agenda for next month.
For next month, just to avoid any kind of.
Yeah, that's, that's what I.
So we're going to do it, do it the right way, right?
That's right.
And just so I can write that down, how, over the 20th?
Yes.
Do you have other business on the agenda for town? Yes. Let me click forward.
Want us to do other business right now?
You don't mind.
So go back to your old business. We're going to skip the review and discuss the Act of Physically A 2020. Old business review, discuss Act 20 Day Appeal Period Verification Template. Certified on regular mail and cost discussion that was brought up last month, and decided we're going to wait a month and start discussing tonight. Got any members of the board that have to say anything on this matter?
I didn't see in the folder, it was tonight. I, is this your number?
Yeah, that's my scratch.
No, that's fine. I wasn't sure who presented this to us. So I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just you giving examples of cases and how many butters you like.
Yes.
And what is all the costs for certified men for each one, correct?
I took all the cases that we had in 2018 that was applicable, took all the butters, gave you a rough average, so you, kind of what we were going forward.
So if we were, if we were to do the certified mail, that's going to be an additional cost for the applicant?
Correct.
Correct, to do for the applicant, not for the board.
As a, as a, I've been on the board now, I'd say seven years, six years on that area, and I have yet to see a butler that would have an interest in a case not, not show up with a regular mail. I know the cost for the applicant for coming in front of the CBA increased dramatically last year already. I'm not speaking for the board, but I'm speaking on my behalf. I believe a regular mail is fine. It's up to the other board members to have any input on that. That's how I feel on that matter.
I understand why certified mail may be beneficial, but I don't think it's necessary. I understand why it would be a benefit to that, but I don't, I personally don't think it's, you know, a must. Unless, of course, there are any other opinions that can weigh in on this.
My, my concern is that if we have a large number of butters, that can become extremely expensive for, the cost, the cost factor can become pretty high. On the other hand, very often the butlers will say, I wasn't aware, nobody told me, I didn't see it, I thought it was drunk mail. The devil's in the details. I'm wondering if we could ultimately determine that if the cost exceeds X figure by snail mail, or I should remember your face, that if the cost would exceed an X figure, and of course, that depends on the number of butters, for example, I'm just going to throw a figure of $50.
Right.
Then we will use snail mail. But if the total cost is under $50, we might as well say $100, whatever it is.
Right.
That's what, I think that makes sense.
So.
Because if you've got a larger number of butters, and it has to go by snail mail because of that, they're going to talk to each other.
Right, right. And that, that's one reason why.
That's why I was like saying that. They do talk to each other.
And just, I'm not sure if you saw, but the information that Nicole brought out, $180.09 cost of mail on average for butters if, through certified mail. If that was, that's with 27 butters, times the $6.7 per certified mail, total $108.90.
Per case.
Right, so now, does that help me think of all our numbers?
It does, because what I'm thinking of is it may make sense ultimately to propose, because we're looking, you're giving me a $180 figure, it's only going to go up, that from the fee that they're already paying versus the total amount, that 50% of the fee come from the money that they're already paying to file it.
I see, so not, not a dollar amount, but a percentage.
Exactly. I think if, because where, I say 50 to 100, where the aggregate here is $180, I forgot that. And if we're saying that, I think if we say that 50% of the fee will come from the fee that's already filed, and the other 50% will be paid by.
Do we know what the percentage, I'm sorry, John, do we know what the percentage of the butters out of every term notice that you want?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I do not know that.
Usually, the majority comes in and out of the market every single time, so it's, on my estimate.
80%?
I would say 80 to 90%.
Wow.
So it's still market everything.
Going on snail mail, they're still getting.
Yes, so I'm saying, now, if I know that, if I'm going to butter to a piece of property, and someone wants to do something, and I oppose or for it, I would be like, no offense, you get the letter the other day, I mean, I don't know, well, everybody else is.
Near the, near the point.
Direct to butters, maybe, but the rest, I mean, I'm not, I just don't feel comfortable adding $180 to a $750 fee.
I'm around it, but I do feel comfortable with a 50/50 split.
But our original cost before this was only $375 for an applicant. We already went up $400 in one, one shot. That's where I'm nervous.
Um, I'm also, you remember, on the board, but do, do we have any record or history of a butler coming before us saying, oh, I didn't know you guys. We do?
Yeah.
So we, if there have been issues when a butler's are upset because they quote-unquote were, or were not notified?
Or they claimed they weren't notified.
That, that is in 40, 50% of our.
So because of that, that makes me feel like it should be certified now, but perhaps not the 100% cost to the butler, I mean, to the applicant.
That's why I'm thinking 50/50, to 50% to the applicant and 50% from the funds already collected of the $750.
All right, so Nicole, when someone comes in to talk to you in regards to coming from the zoning board for the application, how soon do you know how quick your butler's supposed to be made?
So after our discussions previously, the butler's supposed to comes in with the application.
So that comes in with the application, so if there's 10 butters, five people will be notified, he will be responsible for five, the town will be responsible for five. And if there's 50, the town's still on the hook for 25, at not $6.70.
Well, the question's going to be, how's the money going to be collected as well? So if, if we're going to send out 50 notices by certified mail, and we have to collect a fee for 25 of them, is that fee going to be added to the $750 application fee at the time of the application?
May I say something?
Sure.
So through the process right now, when they do come in with the butters listening from the assessors with their application, I calculate the certified mail and write them there, and they give me a check. If this is going to be the same amount of butters afterwards, if you would like, I could ask them for a private check right then and there and hold it until after they're here. That, that would be another option. But again, it's up to the board if they want certified or regular mail, or some split, if you want a 50/50 split. I could ask them for a check.
Mine, that tells me a 50/50 split. That's.
I think that makes sense to me.
Mail.
Does that answer, but you're still asking if you should take your check or hold it?
Correct.
Either way, regardless.
Tim, what do you think?
We're going to vote on it first, really, with the left.
No, I know, but I.
Yeah, I put my thoughts again with this. Through the $750 that we received from the applicant, how much of our, our administrative cost in all this in the end, which is probably not that much.
I agree.
Reason why we increased was, you haven't worked on a 40B project with us yet, okay? When we did some 40Bs in the last year or so, three nights a week, well, not going to get paid anymore to do this, but it's three, two sometimes, two, three nights a week. About 12 o'clock, you actually have to say, I'm going to shut the meeting down because it will continue. So the expense was coming in because there was also, the secretary would have to be there paying for her, things like this. That's why we increased because we did a valuation for the $750.
More use of attorney?
Yeah, attorney fees, all these things. Now, a lot of the 40Bs, they pay for their own, they pay for our attorney, obviously. You know, we got to go get ahold of them, let them know, they get, we say, hey, we need to fill out the KID, they pay that. But most of the fees are for town administration stuff. But we went from $350 to $750. And we went one time, you know, I'm not saying that we weren't behind on our pricing right out of the get-go, but, you know. I just wanted to hear from the other members on this matter, I mean, I, I'm not against the certified mail, I'm not. Just that I think it's an expense.
At whose, what cost?
It's going to cost more for the applicant now, just for example, if they set $50, they're going to get $25 or $6, they're going to be spending another $50 or $60 there, you know? Ten, you know, and 120 by the time you're done, and then, so they'll be paying $950 or $900 to come sit in front of our board. I just, and when, we've had, we've had a few people, well, we never heard about it, we didn't know about it, but it's far and few between, but what does happen?
You're right, and I have to say that now, of course, thinking about it again, the 50/50 is that if we are in the position to help out the town and be there for the town. Like you said, already raising our fee, if they come forward and they find out they might have to pay another $50, is it going to look like to the town that we're just price gouging at that point?
Do we know what, what the fee is another challenge to find around here, has anybody got a comparison?
We did the talking, I think it was.
Yeah, we're about right where we need to be, I think that's why it was raised from where it was to where it is now, because that was in line with the fee structure since around the towns.
And also, Mr. Chairman of the Board, just so you understand, my understanding is that when I ask Marguerite to write up a decision, it costs the town roughly about $600.
Every time you do the phone calls, Marguerite costs us money.
Well, if I had, I could.
Whether it was.
No, absolutely.
You know, and not against Marguerite, she does without a barrier of, but it costs the town, mine is like a time to call the council. So like I say, I feel we're within our roles to go ahead with the certified mail, I'm not saying that, but as, if I came in as an applicant to see if I could do something to a piece of property paying $750 to stop.
Already, you're standing now.
Yeah, and then, and I might not get the answer you want right out of that, but you're taking that chance, plus if you wanted to take the certified mail. I'm not sure if other towns do certification mails. Some, we want to table this one more week and one more month, and maybe we could look to see if other towns do that, and I'm not against that either, it's not like it's a huge deal, but. Obviously, when Dr. Seer comes in front of us, which we're thinking might happen, there's going to be quite a few, there's no notifications going on to them, and that's clearly Marguerite already stated because it's an open case.
I'm not opposed to finding out what other towns do, I just wonder hypothetically, paying, you know, okay, let's say we're hoping to, why should we do it then, just because they do it? I mean, if that's the reason why we're doing it, yes, we're both somewhat of the same type of town, so to speak, but we're different towns, so just because one town doesn't, I don't think, should mean we do it too. Could we use what other towns do as more of a guideline for us?
Sure. In the last five, six years, I think I've heard that, why never notify three times?
Right.
I think it makes sense to hold up until next meeting and to ask the boards secretary to contact the other towns that are but us at least.
It wouldn't.
See what they do, and also because of the different figures we're granting around the percentages, it gives us a chance to digest this a little bit more.
Right.
You okay with it?
I am.
Would you make a motion that secretary notifies local town butlers that we use to see if they do certification of mail? When an applicant comes in, those are on board appeals.
And I guess I'll postpone that motion to postpone that, I'll be done it to next month.
Yeah, to next month, it'll be, I pay it for those to that next month.
Second.
Aye.
Oh, fail. Not used to that.
No, I know, so just as a moment of clarity, Nicole, do we need to formally make the motion to move the discussion of the 2020 budget to next week? Because I know when we left, we said, oh, we'll talk about that, talk about that next month, but do we need to make a formal motion?
To talk about the budget?
We can't.
We can't, the budget has to be dismissed by the end of this month.
We'll have 31st of March.
So that doesn't mean.
So, that being said, that was some of the, do we want to go back and review and discuss the Physiolya budget, or do we want to wait on that and hold on to?
And in what, the meeting?
Yes. That's what we just, it's out of order. I'm going to wait on that one. So then, the next, I don't want to call it business review, discuss Act Case Number 03-18 Digest that was postponed. That's no longer going to be heard tonight or?
It's no longer going to be heard, he postponed because he's still trying to get some documents. The reason it's still on here is because it's just been an outstanding agenda item, and I wasn't sure if the board wanted to make a motion that he should produce the documents before Marguerite, before coming before the board, or if they just continue to have it on the agenda. Either way, it was okay, obviously, that's all.
Did he stick what documents he needed to get to the board that he didn't have?
It's still the list that we've had for months now, and I didn't list it here because it was just postponed. He, every month he tells me he's working on it, and it's kind of like doing his lawyer, and then he postpones.
It's financials.
Yes.
Yeah, it's financials, and it's what he's supposed to have been for months, I don't know, I just wanted to make sure that that's what he was trying to say he was still getting.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we might get, might do better to take it off of the future agendas until he produces the documents to our attorney.
I agree.
So, everybody agree on that motion, or do you, so this is what we're going to do. Case Number 03-18 Digest has been postponed, it's been postponed multiple times in front of this board, we're going to request that it comes into this financial statement, it's to be given to Marguerite. Michelle, Nicole, our secretary, to be reserved over to our council before we hear this case again.
Second.
And. God, okay. All those in favor?
Almost, almost.
Aye.
I'll get with it, maybe my last time, I don't say that. We're going to review and discuss Acts, number motion, moving meeting location and meeting day. Remember, this was brought up in front of us, we all discussed about, talking about moving maybe a different day because it was conflicting with other boards. Trying to keep it on a Wednesday night, I believe is what everybody was trying to do, I'm open for it, I'm just feeling out the other members of the board if they're okay with this.
I would prefer, as you say, on Wednesdays.
Yes, is it, is there anyone here that has a conflict with that date of our Wednesday being the third?
I don't have a conflict with that personally, but I was just asking the building commissioner if the BOS is meeting, so they're not meeting tonight, so we're meeting on a separate Wednesday.
Which is what we should.
It's not going to conflict with the BOS meeting, so.
I don't know what was discussed last meeting because I wasn't here. Problem with conflicts in the meetings isn't necessarily with the BOS, it's with people who meet this space in this building, it's the Board of Health and Conservation Commission.
When, when do they like to meet, what is their?
Everybody likes to meet on a Wednesday, that's the problem.
It's the thing is, changing our Wednesday.
What, what other board is trying to meet on the third Wednesday of the month?
This building will house three of the big meeting players.
Okay.
Board of Health, Zoning Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, they will all work out of this building. So we're trying to work out a scenario where we can alter the nights so that we won't have any conflicts with scheduling on the same night, especially if meetings like this.
So there's three, three boards, including us, who are the third?
Right.
That are going to meet on, in this department.
So the, the Board of Health is trying to move their meetings to Thursday nights.
Okay.
And it's been working for them, so they're okay with Thursday nights.
So it's just one board?
So it's just one of the board now, that board happens to be comprised of some of the longest touring board members on the planet, so. I'm not sure how willing they're going to be to move their meeting then.
What, they meet Wednesday nights and they want to meet on the same night, we want to meet on the third, so we can move ours to the first, second, or last, does that still work as a Wednesday for you?
Well, I'm not sure, do you have the conservation?
Board of Selectment is first and third, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, well, we're talking a different board.
No, I realize that, I just.
What, what time do you want them to meet?
Seven.
Seven. So even if Concom, Doug, and Gilson still want to meet on Wednesdays, we could potentially, I could potentially ask them to come in earlier. The only problem is if there's a, there's a running with overtime.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
What, so they like the third Wednesday of the month?
Typically, yeah.
Do we do the fourth Wednesday, is that a conflict with your selectmen?
Selectmen now, is it?
Selectmen is first and third, I believe.
So it wouldn't be.
No, it wouldn't.
I'm okay with it, as long as everyone else is okay, I like Wednesdays, because Wednesdays is like the middle of the month week.
It's easier for myself to get off on one. But I'll work around. Board of Health, over the Thursdays, a big help, because they have big meetings, so.
So do we go with the third?
CBA's going to do Thursdays also.
And conservation isn't due yet, but they're going to be moving over here in the next couple of months.
So we'll see the second or the fourth?
Correct.
Right.
And that's not conflicting with the selectmen, it's not conflicting with the Board of Health.
The only thing the fourth Wednesday does, just so you can be aware, is when you get towards the end of the year, it's going to conflict with the holidays. Thanksgiving, Christmas, it's going to conflict with the holidays, so you may have to change your meeting in those two months.
On those two months.
Or you may have to alter your day.
Which we've done before.
We talked about when I asked this one, we stayed with what we needed.
So if this were to be voted on tonight hypothetically, and hypothetically, we went with the last Wednesday, would we be looking at starting the 27th of February, or would we want to wait until March? Like, would it be, would it, would? That's, that's up to the board. I mean, nothing's been posted formally that the meeting is, we know what we typically do.
No, it hasn't been posted yet, and I would say that if you did want to start it in February, then Marguerite would be able to attend in February, I mean, if Digest was actually going to attend.
So that's better, and I know for me, now, I mean, which is not a big, big deal, I have to tell work now what Wednesday night I can move on to work, and that would be better notice for me to tell them. As opposed to doing, you know, if we did the first, that would be tough for the second.
We go for the fourth Wednesday, beginning February, February 27, March 27, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm, as long as everyone else is.
We're able to do that. So I make a motion that we move the zoning Board of Appeals meetings to the fourth Wednesday of the month, starting February 27, if we're going forward into further notice. All those in favor?
Aye.
I get it, I'm almost there. Okay, and approve the minutes for November 28, 2018, has everybody here had a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Any discussion?
No.
Chair, I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes of November 28, 2018 meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes up to December 19 to 2018 minutes.
Any discussion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public input?
I have a point of order, sir. So I guess, I guess the legal skinny, when stuff like this happens. And the vice chairman automatically assumes the position and controls the meeting in the absence of the chair. The only time the board can reorganize without it being agenda writing is if the chairman and the vice chairman are not present, or if someone has to leave the meeting and neither the chairman nor the vice chairman is present. Then the rest of the board, if I may have a forum, can reorganize to appoint an acting chairman, until, until, in this case, a permanent replacement. So you're the chairman until the board meets again and isn't agenda writing. Marguerite did say that if you being the chairman is going to be a concern because administratively, there are things that you're going to have to do. And your board may want to consider a special meeting, which you can certainly do to reorganize.
You're aware of that?
No.
No, it's supposed to.
It has to be a posted meeting, so if you wanted to post a meeting for next week to reorganize the board, then that, that may be appropriate, simply because.
I just don't want to be able to, not be able to hold the, do the things that the chairman needs to do this month while I'm not around, I'm going to be in Kentucky, Pennsylvania.
Yeah, and that's, that's a legitimate concern, and the chairman does need to.
How soon does a notice have to be posted?
It's 48 hours.
So we can't do tomorrow.
All right.
So I have a question, I do have a question, it's important for that, so if that's the case, then paper organization. Greg, there's still a second on the paper organization, so you still have the least thing to second bills?
Yes.
Okay.
So even if you met next week, Greg, you have to come in on Tuesday, sign payroll and bills, and then the board can reorganize at their discretion if you posted a meeting for next week.
And Monday's a holiday, right?
Do I assume vice chair or not necessarily?
No.
No.
Okay, so right now, we are chairman, secretary, and two members.
Clerk, well, clerk, yeah.
Clerk and.
So I am off next Wednesday evening.
I'm in Kentucky Wednesday and Thursday, I won't be back around until Friday, and no, Towns Hall's not open.
I am off Tuesday.
I am in Kentucky.
See the problem?
This is why, this is, this, I knew this was going to happen too.
I, I had a feeling too, when I saw it wasn't on the agenda today, I was like, it's not happening.
No.
What I can do though is, I'm on a boat Tuesday morning, or Wednesday.
Monday?
I can do, the earliest I can do is the 28th, January.
We don't necessarily have to call a special meeting between now and then, we can always.
As long as, as long as he's available to come in and sign payroll and documents.
Correct.
Let me ask you something, there's something need to be signed before the 28th?
Every Monday.
Every, every Monday, payroll.
Tuesday, payroll, that's all.
And you mean Monday morning, sign the payroll?
No, they're not here, closed, Mountain Luther King Day.
Not Monday, Tuesday.
For Tuesday.
After Tuesday.
He won't be there for that.
I got a, I got a 5:55 boat, I'm gone. So.
Can the payroll be?
Can I do this tomorrow?
Yes, I can actually.
Can I sign what you need tomorrow?
Yes.
All right, I will be in here before 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Sign whatever you need, you and I, Zach, you can't be around tomorrow, right? Ask me $48, say.
No, I can be around tomorrow, I just, I can be around Friday.
No, Friday, I'm in Boston.
If you'd like, maybe I'd be able to go to Jen tomorrow and get a new signatory sign, you know, we voted on previously. And then if you're coming in tomorrow, you can sign off on it, and you can designate perhaps Zach or anyone else to sign off. I could probably set that up tomorrow before you come in.
Yeah, I'll call you when I'm on my way, I know I have a small phone up here on Barton Street in the morning, I can, I got to be in Providence in the afternoon, so I can be here in the morning sometime.
So just for a point of order.
We need to restructure the entire board.
If I am, if I am nominated and I accept chair, you can remain vice.
Oh, yes.
And then, but now, and a clerk would have to be assigned.
That's what I'm getting at.
So.
Here's the thing.
So Jason, if we're going by seniority, it would be Jason Quinn.
Correct, he's not here to make the decision, and that's why I didn't want a board.
Correct.
So do we have to restructure the board tonight?
No, we can't.
No, we can't.
I really, I, I would think Jason Quinn would, should be the clerk, I would stay as vice, Zach, you'd become the chairman, and then we'd have the other two.
The two at large members.
And Fegum?
The only thing I would suggest is, this is an obvious example, by only having two signers on the board, you can see whether it becomes an issue if one of the board members aren't available. My opinion is you should have at least three signers on the board, and that should be part of the reorganization.
Okay.
Sure, so Nicole, if you could add that to the agenda?
Yeah.
So now we have to figure out what's the soonest?
Well, she's going to get the letter for me to sign tomorrow, so we have that taken care of.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, with that letter, we would be able to choose three people to, to be able. Yeah, with that letter, we would be able to, um, choose three people to, to be able to sign off. Through the new authorization form for Jen, so, um, if the board could decide who they would designate.
Well, I, I don't wanna speak for, uh, Jason Quinn, but I'm thinking Jason.
I don't know if you can.
We cannot do that till we reorganize.
We can't discuss it.
I don't think that can be happened, I didn't wanna do it until Jason was here either.
People don't be officially.
Yeah.
What if for some reason Jason was like, no, I, you know, hypothetically, hypothetically.
Personally, all you were concerned with realistically until next month is strictly getting payroll up. Okay, so I'm fine with just following through, coming in, taking care of your payroll. We, we reach out to Jason Quinn, make sure that he can, we'll see if he could definitely be here for the next meeting, which is gonna be February twenty-seventh now, right? It's not gonna be the twentieth, or whatever. Um, let him know that date, or send out an email, um.
So legally.
And then at that point, at that point, he would be, when they all back in here, I can, they'll be on the agenda, we'll have that. I can go right to the agenda and change, restructure the board before the meeting starts, correct?
Correct.
That's what I'd like to do.
That would be the first order of business.
That's what I like to do.
First order of all business.
That's what I want to do.
You need to open a meeting, and then you can.
Then we, I'll open the meeting, do what we need to do, the pledge allegiance, all the stuff.
And then for the remainder of that meeting, whoever.
You would be the chairman, yeah, you would, you all, you'd do all the talking, get it all out of the.
And my question is, since we.
So don't be sick.
So that you're clear, in the interim period, anything that Nicole has to go to someone to, with, or to, above and beyond signature, she's gonna be going to you, Greg.
Yes.
Now, that being said, legally, is Greg at a position that he can inform me of these things?
He can inform the entire board.
He can inform anybody who wants to.
So if, so if there are things that you say, you know, hey, Nicole, Nicole just brought this to myself. Right.
May I, may I recommend, if you would like for the interim, the board can hold that I would notify whoever on the board you want. That doesn't.
I, I think anything to do with the type, the, what we deal with should be with all the members of the board anyways.
Then, okay.
So, next month on the agenda, we have to have reorganizations for us. Secondly, we should do the payment authorization form directly after, and then our gender items, and then we can move right down along.
Correct.
So we're not gonna authorize the payroll today, is what you guys are thinking?
No, that, we still can, because you can still, you can still, you can still sign that.
You can still sign, you can still, there is sign.
Nicole, is there something he can sign tonight before he leaves to for that?
Unfortunately, I, I didn't, again, I didn't know that this was gonna happen. Um, I can create a payroll for tomorrow morning, so whenever he comes in, he can sign it. Only if, if Thursday works better for you for the interim, I could always do Thursdays.
Well, tomorrow's Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, the only reason why, I, we just started a large job out of town, I'm not gonna be around, that's one of the biggest reasons. I'm not gonna be around the whole month, so this is why I really need to get with you Thursday.
Of all the time, yeah.
So the question is, can he sign for more than one week of payroll at a time?
No. No, because they are.
Actually, if you want, if you want.
Then, and who's the other signature, because we don't have another signature there, to sign next week?
Well, we're doing, our payroll's monthly, right, isn't it correctly?
No.
No, it's weekly.
We get our checks monthly.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
But.
So you need something signed next week too then?
Every day.
Let me see what day I can do that. So your, Monday's work for you is the best, 'cause I'll tell you right now, next.
Monday's a holiday.
I got that this week.
Yeah.
Uh, following week, um, I'm gonna be there Tuesday, Thursday. I can do, hmm, say Friday morning? Does that work?
That would all work.
So it's Thursday.
I'm just curious, and I don't know if these people works are great, but can a signature be accepted through a fax?
Well, we're gonna do the signature form, right?
No.
No, the, the power not allow that, sure not allow that, we're standing for.
Sorry, let me clarify again, as, uh, Mr. Reinsen said, the first order is gonna be the reorg, and the second is gonna be the payment authorization, where we will get the other signature. So Jonathan, on that interim, we're trying to plan out with Greg's schedule when he's doing the payroll.
Right, I real, I realize that, but I think next week he said he cannot, at all.
I can, this week here, I can, next week being close, Friday.
This is gonna go on for six weeks, you know, until you meet again by ease.
Because why don't we then meet as scheduled next month? And then after that, start the fourth Wednesday.
We're still talking.
We're talking forward.
I, I know at that point.
Well, it's just this next week's the real bad one for me, because I'm leaving, I'm going over Sunday. I won't be around Monday, I won't be around Tuesday, I won't be around Wednesday, I'll be around Thursday, the twenty-fourth, I can make that available.
Okay, so.
Can we, what's your schedule after that?
After that.
Any conflicts with payroll, or bills to be paid?
Realistically, we got a four-day week here, that's all it is, right?
Correct.
I personally don't have to be on that site after that, uh, the week of, uh, the twenty-eighth, because that's just a meeting with a bunch of members over there that week.
What are you doing on the twenty-fifth, that Friday, January?
It's closed though, right?
No, 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 give me up, we can post a meeting. Meet on a Friday, we don't have to meet when Towns Hall's open, we can meet in the town we want. Schedule a meeting, meet, reorganize, and get everything done.
I'm good with, I'm good with this.
Meet, can we meet in here, or?
We can, yep.
Now, if you make me aware of the date.
Does it have to be televised?
Uh. Is that the only agenda right?
I honestly don't know.
We probably.
We have to call it.
No, you, we have meetings that are, take the televised, it's in the mix, so. If I would not put anyone on the agenda, I don't know those two things.
If we're gonna meet on a Friday for me, I would say it has to be in the morning.
And also, should we, just taking ahead to the agenda, not just it's tonight, but that night?
And that's assuming Jason can make it also.
Right, discussing the, do we post, uh, open a post for a new position now? Because we're now.
I was just gonna ask that question.
We are now, um, yeah. So is that something that we can even discuss posting now, or do we have to wait to discuss posting it when the board reorganizes?
I think you could discuss and act on the same night, so if you meet, had a special meeting, you could act on those three items. Those are, those are all restructuring administrative duties.
We can vote right now, we got three voting members on the final board, don't be confused by having two associated members in the public set. The composition of the board is five, or the meeting law states three, is, is a four. So we could technically vote.
I'm gonna go up there, you guys can vote. I heard him say something like that, I'm gonna walk outside.
So if we're talking, if we're talking the, uh, the twenty-fifth, I'm available on the twenty-fifth after two thirty.
Yeah, but he's not.
I'm not.
Oh, I thought that, okay.
I'm only available for single night.
Alright, but Jason's has a full schedule, both two, so we gotta keep him in mind on that.
Yeah, remember that, so, that to do, um.
I can, I can get here Thursday night.
Um, I cannot.
Okay.
I close at nine.
That's Monday the twenty-eighth.
I do not have that schedule on me, I'll have it tomorrow.
You know, if we just focus on these few items, we only need thirty minutes.
We have to wait forty-eight hours, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Why can't we meet a, I don't know if everybody's okay, but why can't we meet like Saturday morning? Does that work for everyone?
I can do Saturday afternoon.
Doesn't for me.
You can meet any time you want.
One o'clock, one o'clock in Sunday afternoon, yeah.
I, ladies and gentlemen.
Sunday afternoon is not gonna happen.
I know. Me, Saturday past two thirty.
We also have to think of, of Nicole and her.
No, no, that's what I'm asking.
No, no, um.
The clerk, the clerk can take minutes, if, if.
Which would be no longer me. Would be some, it would be somebody else.
So I think we're putting the horse behind the, the buggy, 'cause we really need to talk to Jason.
So.
If you could reach out to Jason tomorrow.
If it's okay with you and the board, um, we'll focus on tomorrow, you'll, you'll send it there.
Same thing.
Next Thursday, you'll sign up in, in the interim, I'll email the whole board and say, this is what we're thinking.
Right.
Give you your schedules, and we'll compile it, if Saturdays are available and Fridays are available, it does open it up a little, so I'll include that in the email.
They are for me, just depends on what time.
Alright, very good.
Sounds good.
Okay, so moving on, public input, I think we got enough to get ourselves in trouble, we're gonna go back to, you discussed the act fiscal year two thousand twenty report. Did everybody have a chance to re, review this?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? Anybody?
No. No, I'm kinda, I'm kinda new to all this, to be honest with you, so I'm not really sure.
I actually have one of these in front of me.
No, me neither.
So Nicole?
Yes.
Can you give us some, why we have this in front of us today?
We have this in front of us because the town administrator and board selection have chosen, uh, to include this in the process. So all boards are voting on their budgets, it's a brand-new thing, and then it's going before the board for approval. Um, I can walk you through kind of the changes that I've done, if that's okay?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind.
Okay, so the two columns are looking at, and the ones that I bolded, um, encircled. Um, the FY nineteen estimated expenses, which is the last half of this FY nineteen year.
Yep.
Um, I just took the, uh, expenses that we have used and the amount that we are allowed, and said that we would hopefully use that amount, it's a estimate, estimation, so, um, I just kinda said we use it all. Um, and FY twenty, um, is based on, um, the current rate of my salary step for FY twenty. Um, a twenty, or a two percent increase, um, for the salary member stipend, uh, based on what Bob recommended. Um, overtime addition as well, uh, two percent increase. The clothing allowance, then the sick leave is, um, a solid number that, that can change. Um, and then there's that, the total line.
Do they give you a clothing allowance this year versus last year, we didn't have one?
Oh, I.
Yeah, it was two hundred, now it's zero.
It's there.
No, it wasn't there in nineteen, it's now in two thousand twenty. That's a clerical error?
I, I wasn't aware of that, this is how I received, uh, the only things that I changed were really those two columns, so.
Nope, no, I, I'm just going through it as legging it, so, yep.
Um, so everything else is based on Jen's template. Um, so as far as the clothing allowance goes, I, I don't know what we've received in the past.
Nicole, when were you, when did you come in, when were you hired?
Last February.
That's probably why it wasn't there yet.
Yeah, I showed it back here in August, I mean, July, it does show it there. So that's what it was, it's like the beginning of the year.
That's, yeah.
Okay, you're on the same page?
Um, so continuing on the professional and technical, um, just so the board is clear, that is the account that we pay any sort of legal fees out of, um, Marguerite, all the emails and discussions. Um, I increased that by two point five percent, again, based on what Mr. Adams recommended. Um, communications, same, and increased two point five percent. Office supplies, two point five. Travel, now this is, um, something that I actually discussed with Jen. We apparently didn't request a travel budget, um, I don't know why this happened. Um, and I asked her about it, and she said, well, you guys didn't request it, so. Um, I, I really don't know what we use the travel for before, maybe it was the mileage?
We have gotten paid for mileage insurance.
We have.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't quite know, maybe, uh, the last budget is the proof I can, so maybe he wasn't expecting.
Hi, Jen. Travel is usually used when a board member or employee travels out of Dayton for, um, travel-related, um.
For example?
Like seminars or meetings that you attend, things of that nature.
Gives you mileage.
Yeah, if you, if you attend something, and it's zoning board related, then you are.
Last February, we did take that travel.
Right.
So right now, as of the fiscal year twenty, on the, from the, uh, what, what I see here, we're not gonna have any travel according to what she has down.
According to what she has down, no, but from my understanding, because I have gone on trainings with Mr. Reinsen, Mr. Chico previously, I believe it came out of the dues and subscriptions as well as the registration needs. So, I don't quite know why.
Can you tell me when the recommendation has the, uh, D I V dash zero hyphen, I don't know what that means?
So that, that's an error based on calculation, so this is an Excel document.
So it's like a, okay.
It's, so I actually asked Jen about that, and she said it's because the, that, um, that percent is calculated based on other numbers on the.
Okay.
So it's grabbing zero and dividing another number by it, and it never likes, so.
Takes it back as a.
As an error. So, I did increase the dues and subscriptions by two point five percent based on what, um, Mr. Adams recommended, and then there's, uh, the total at the bottom. Um, I did include, um, a little extra box for the board's benefit based on my salary, and any questions based on that? Um, if, I just pretty much took, um, just, okay, let me back up. Uh, when I started, I started at a lower step than Ross. So our previous budgets accounted for a larger salary.
Right.
So I recently came across that and tried to readjust the budget based on my salary. So that's what that calculation is, so it looks like we've just been going down in salary, but it's actually.
So the game, because we had mental bills and.
Right.
Yeah, so we kinda plateaued, and then.
Okay.
So, that's the reconciliation for that.
Any members got any questions?
No.
And the two and a half percent is probably because we got the two and a half override, and I can think like Bob here, and got that figured out. Yeah.
Can you still add a couple, call or not?
Um, I can add whatever.
I would, I, my personal opinion is if we have the travel expenses, I personally obviously don't drive it. That doesn't mean I wanna have travel expenses, a train ticket or something to Boston, but others here, they have that expense, and even though it's coming, as you said theoretically, from other areas, I think, I think we should put a line item in, even if it's two hundred and fifty dollars or something.
I would like to see that as well.
I think it categorizes it.
So I could, if the board would like, I could add or request, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars for the next fiscal year, but just be aware that that won't take effect until July.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for that as well.
Well, the reason why I'm, I'm gonna question one thing on that, you say two hundred and fifty dollars. We had an allowance in here of five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, am I correct on that?
That was expended, in the prior year, it was expended, so that was one use of five hundred.
And we only used fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven dollars.
So I feel comfortable with the two fifty then.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I would also.
At the current rate of reimbursement, that's about four hundred miles worth of driving.
Yeah, so what's that, fifty-three, fifty-three, fifty a mile or something?
So after, any other questions, members of the board?
Yes.
Your budget?
No.
So I make a motion, that we accept the fiscal year budget with the increase of the two hundred and fifty dollars to be sent over to.
Travel.
Yep.
And have that taken into the travel expenses.
Um, would you do line item fifty-seven, ten, there is.
I'll make your motion first, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, uh, go ahead, I can redo this, go ahead.
Alright, what I was gonna say was, the only question here which we can't address yet is whether or not our budget is going to include any expenses for mailings.
Got a point. Would that come out of dues and subscriptions or by?
No, so this, this is strictly the board, so any, from my understanding of the discussion previous, any of the mailings would come out of the applicants, and not the board.
Well, except, except that now what we're talking about is whether or not.
If we, if we do that.
Oh, correct.
So therefore, that could affect the budget itself.
So those, quite a lot, those, those funds would be expended through the professional technical account?
Right.
So did you run a surplus at the end of last fiscal year, was there balance?
Yes. Uh, yes.
Yeah, there was two thousand.
What was the month?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred and forty-two.
So that would easily, if you, if you flat out, it would easily cover the cost of.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure we somehow.
The other thing is, uh, once you take your vote, just so you're aware, that budget will not be acted on unless it's signed by each board member.
That's correct.
So, we need, you all need to sign one copy.
Okay.
And that gets submitted.
Do we wait until Nicole puts in the two hundred and fifty?
You can write it.
We're gonna write it.
Oh, okay.
And, and does it have to be all board members here present, or do I have to wait for me?
Just the ones who are present. As long as you have a form.
Okay, I'm gonna do this again. I'm gonna make a motion, and act that we accept fiscal year two thousand twenty's budget of.
Just wanna move that two fifty to the column that we.
Over here, yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna make, gonna make a motion, that we accept fiscal year two thousand twenty's budget. Um, based on Mary's statement for the fiscal year, except for our line item, what was the travel here?
Yep.
We're gonna do five, seven, ten, to increase that to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Okay, bills paid.
We need another motion to accept the budget.
Oh, I thought I did that. Second, okay, all, all those in favor? Make another motion, accept the budget?
I'll make the motion to accept the budget.
Second, second, what, okay.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I'm just gonna sign it.
Alright, alright.
You're sir.
Today is the.
I feel, sixteen. Yes, you're good.
Governor, I'd like to, well, suggest that um, if we're gonna add the two hundred and fifty dollars to that line item, as we're doing this individually, put a dot next to it, and initial it.
You got it.
So, so. Oh, you want me to do it for?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is bill paid, bills paid, everybody review the bills paid?
Yep, yes.
Any questions?
Make a motion that we accept the bills paid to the amount of two thousand dollars, uh, five hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes.
I'm sorry, um, were you approving the bill paid or the payroll?
Okay, I went for the, the bills paid, we're gonna do payroll next.
Oh, I was looking at the payroll number.
See, you talked out of place, alright, alright, so we're gonna redo that again, guys. Public input, okay, going down to authorized expenditures payroll, for the fee of two thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents, any questions?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion, Mr. Chairman, paying uh, payroll of two thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I know, I know.
Alright, uh, bills paid.
Um, Mr. Acton Chairman, bills paid was an issue, um, uh, Mr. Adams didn't wanna sign it, um, so it was recommended to me by the town administrator to bring it before the board. Um, we have three bills on it, um, one is Stony Ridge, which would come out of the fifty-three G account. One is the Pines, which would come out of their fifty-three G account, and one is uh, Gay and Gay, which would come out of our professional and technical. So I would pass this down, uh, with you. And uh, if, if you do approve it, um, I would.
Get it. So we've got Stony Ridge, Pines, and what's the last one, and what's the two thousand nineteen?
It's Gay and Gay, it's a, uh, we both, uh, I think it's an honorable piece that they're monitoring, um, they both have a stock in the state, I see them very, uh.
Thanks, man.
Give me a better pen.
Alright, so we gotta sign these. And these are all coming out of these uh, people's accounts?
Correct, uh, Stony Ridge is coming out of their fifty-three G, which begins with the developer. The Pines is coming from their fifty-three G, again, as a developer. And the third one, although it's just, it just says Gay and Gay, it's from the professional and technical.
So it's coming out of our account?
It is.
Did you, um, did you want to sign the other, the budgets that you have to, you have to, that's kind of.
No, that's outside, I can do that way.
No.
That's all, we only need to sign one, all need to sign one, yeah.
Maybe just sign one, that one, the copy, that's all signatures.
And then I'll present that to the board's boardroom.
Right.
And we, uh, two fifty won't be approved until July.
Right, yes.
Right.
Alright, I think we've covered everything. Sad day of zoning board appeals, we've lost uh, Bob Adams, our chairman, and it's solely gonna be missed. And uh, pull through this as we, I don't remember the board, I think we can do it, there are all bunch of gentlemen here.
I favor.
Um, obviously, we heard him say when he left, if there's any questions or any concerns we might have, we can always go fall back on, or any older business that we're not familiar with.
Yep.
And uh, wish you luck, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
To um, the former adjournment, um, would it be in the board's best interest to send me a letter to the former chair thanking you for your service to the town?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they know our best, best service.
Without a doubt.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we uh, have the administrative assistant fail out of thanking uh, Mr. Robert Adams for his many years' service, um, for the zoning board appeals, and the presence of the town.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I know I'm not a member of the board, but I would have to decide that if that's possible.
Yep. So we'll have that for next week, for next meeting, incentive?
Uh, I could actually bring that to a special meeting.
Oh, well, sure, sure.
Alright, great, thank you.
So um, again, I just wanted to say, you know, that um, Tuesday the twenty-second, I cannot be on that Tuesday, I have a meeting that evening for Bob and Eric. But next Thursday, I, I, for partners, things, so that's on, on the table, but any other day, I'm available, so, or have you just um, decided to be between the forums, um, and Mr. Quinn, and then um.
I think Nicole's gonna send out an email, so.
Sure, sure, email, email.
We could do this Saturday, I don't care if it's five-thirty in the morning, till whenever, I don't, I'm, you laugh, I'm gone.
No, no.
But uh, I don't care whenever.
Saturday, I could that early, I, I could do it that early.
I would have to do after one, just so, I think, I was getting down.
That's the earliest that we think we can do this, because um, honestly, um, I do not wanna interfere with uh, signing checks, payroll, following under the chains. Things that need to be, I just, I just can't. Work really, it's not that I really want to do it, I just can't do it.
I'll, I'll send out the email first thing tomorrow, and hopefully Jason, I think he has Jason out.
Sure.
Yeah.
And see, if he responds quickly, then I can just, I could post for Saturday, if you guys want it for Saturday.
That's fine, I'm, I'm fine with it personally.
What, post the meeting Saturday?
A special meeting to, to handle.
We'll have to look at the weather, too, we should just, weather company.
Yeah, I heard, yeah.
Well, you can't do Saturday, you can't do Saturday.
I can do Saturday again.
I can do Saturday after two-thirty. So, Jake.
Need to include me in that, correct, cause I have to open up the building.
Okay.
So tentatively.
Is that why you're hanging out here?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.